Trust me, I get it. I run.
That's that given wisdom.
We're back on the record in independent cab. I believe we are at that point where you have the ability to examine this person.
Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, I'd like to reserve my right to do so and give up the first seat to Mr. Winner.
That's perfectly fine.
Assuming I will do that.
You're gonna pass it to Mr. Gibson. And he's gonna pass it back.
Okay. Mr. Carson, Brent.
Yes, sir.
I want to talk about the first pro forma submitted with the application, but I'd like to do it rather quickly.
That's fine.
Okay. Can we agree that there was a lot of expenses that were omitted from the original pro forma that you didn't consider such as meters, two-way radios, radio frequency communications?
Yes.
Okay. You didn't have expenses for the advertising top signs.
Um, I don't agree on that one. I mean.
Okay. You didn't have expenses for turning the cars into taxis.
Correct.
Paint, cheer lights, all of it. You also only had 35 cabs when you're probably gonna need some more for breakdowns.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Um. You didn't have the fees from the airport. Two-four. Traditionally, all rides off the airport, that's, I think it's 20% of the industry on average from the airport. That was not in the original, was it?
Um, it doesn't need to be, in my opinion, because it's, if it was under the lease model like that pro forma was, the driver remits that money to the company to pay. So if the driver, lease driver goes to the airport and picks somebody up, it's the 240 hit charge on him. He has to remit all of the statutes, all the taxes and fees, such as airport, 3%, all that. That would go to my company and I would have to pay out that money. But it's a pass-through, so it should, it's not supposed to be on there.
Okay, I understand your answer. The excise tax on the original pro forma was based on the lease and that was incorrect, wasn't it?
Yeah, and I, in my deposition, I told you that that shouldn't even be in that, that line item shouldn't be on the pro forma because it's pass-through.
Okay. And you only had liability insurance, no SIR, right?
My understanding.
Um, you didn't have 25 cents per mile for maintenance, which I think is what Desert Cab average and they have all incomes. Your estimates of, I think it was 11,000 plus 8.2 for mechanics was just under 20,000. It's more likely around 28, 29?
I don't.
Or do you know?
I don't agree with that.
You didn't have a TA with an onion fee, right? This is the first pro forma, local taxes.
I think I did. I can't remember if you showed me that, but I.
Can we agree that with all the expenses on the original pro forma lease model, failure to have those expenses in there made you upside down uncompensable?
Well, if I had my increased expenses, you can see that I only, in the revenue section of it, I only accounted for one lease per vehicle per day. There are opportunities for me to double up that lease and have two shifts on that same vehicle, which would increase my revenue too. I was being very conservative as it goes to that. So I don't think it is not, it wasn't compensable.
Okay. I looked over your new pro forma. And I had some questions. George Alavan also looked it over and he pointed out some things for me to ask about. In the new pro forma, you identified two possible managers.
Correct.
And they are unnamed.
Correct.
Okay, and the reason they're unnamed is because you think we're gonna go scare them or something?
I can't testify as to what I think you guys, what you guys are gonna do. I can testify, I can testify what I think.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna testify what your guys' motives would be. But I'm not gonna.
Okay, why didn't you identify these two possible managers?
Because, one, I think I explained it to this, is I have nothing to offer them right now. I don't have a company. Have some people come to me and expressed an interest? Yes. And they said, hey Brent, if you get this, call me. And I don't want to put those people's name out there because I told them, one, I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't tell who these people are. And two is, I don't think it's any of your guys' business.
Okay. Um, but these, these two people, possible managers, their experience with the cab industry?
Yes.
Did you walk through your new pro forma with them?
Nope.
Why not?
No, I didn't.
Why not?
Because they're not my employee. I can't do anything with them.
Well, it'd be a good idea to go over your pro forma with someone in the industry to see if your assumptions are accurate and did you miss anything?
Well, I think that has been done because, one, I submitted a pro forma, you guys, and I asked you during discovery saying, hey, if it's wrong, tell me where it's wrong. So, and you did, and I went and fixed it according to those suggestions. Isn't that me talking to somebody in the industry as to whether it's accurate or not?
Okay, let's talk about your new pro. Um. In that you have a 6% loan, like the bank loan you money for the cars. You think you can get 6%?
Hopefully.
Okay, that's a hopeful.
That's the average.
Gotcha. In this new model, you use the TA stat of $19.38 per trip.
Which one are you on, Mr. Winner? Sorry. Are you under the which?
Revenue.
Okay.
I'm not gonna find it.
No, I mean, just under revenue, okay. Because there's the lease model versus the.
No, this is a new model, with the employee.
Ah, okay. Revenues, okay. Yes, 1938, I see that.
I think I got to the back of it and it shows you're gonna make $13,000 a month profit roughly.
Yeah, I mean, outside of the first one because of the loans and stuff like that that don't have to be paid.
So, that's what your plan is?
Yes.
Um, the 13, or I'm sorry, the $19.38 per trip is the TA stat for the average revenue per trip, right?
Yes.
Now.
Well, sorry, hold on. It was for the, I can't, it was for the month of May or whatever this stat I used, that.
It's probably pretty close anyway.
Yeah.
Now, the, the 3% excise tax comes off the 1938, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so that reduces that revenue by $14,436 per month.
Say that again?
The 3% is taken off the $19.38 per trip. You have a gross revenue of two, or I'm sorry, $481,000.
I understand now.
Okay, and you need to add an additional expense.
I don't.
Reduce that amount by 3% excise tax of $14,436.
No, I don't.
Oh, you don't? Not a pay tax?
I do, but that is an amount that is due at a later time, correct? I don't pay it every day, is that right? Every 30 days, they say, here's your bill. Here it is. I can move that over onto my liabilities, under short-term liabilities, and it does not affect a pro forma income statement. It affects my pro forma balance.
Somebody's gotta pay the $14,400, right? Even if you don't do it every day, you gotta pay it.
Yeah, but I mean, again, it's not part of an income statement. Depending on how I book it, if I want to book it as a liability, that's a balance sheet. If I want to book it as an expense, then I would have to put that there.
Okay, so you call it something different, but you still have.
Still have to pay it, yeah.
Okay.
Also, if you look at here, there's, why don't, what's a depreciation expense? Is that, is that tangible or is it paper?
Well, I'm just asking you some questions.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just pointing out what a financial statement is.
Okay. There's, uh, 297,000 and change trips per year. That's what you estimate?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we know that 20% of the all rides come off the airport and you have to pay the airport $2.40 per ride. That makes it a monthly expense. If it's average, if you do what everybody else does, $11,912.
Fair statement.
Right?
Oh, I, what was the question?
Well, um, you have to pay the airport if you do rides off the airport, don't you?
Correct.
$2.40 per ride.
Correct.
And if you do like most everybody else does, 20% of your rides come off the airport, you have to include that. That is $11,912 per month.
Okay.
So that cuts into your 13,000 profit, doesn't it?
No, it's the same thing. If it's not an expense, I can book it as a liability.
You still gotta pay it.
I still gotta pay it, but that's not the purpose of an income statement.
You list 6% for workers' compensation. A new operator with no experience, you really think you're gonna get 6%? Or are you just hoping there?
It's an assumption.
Okay.
Is it reasonable? Yes, I believe it is reasonable.
You listen, this is a, you listed mechanics at $17 an hour. Is that what the market is for mechanics, cab companies?
If I say that again, Mr. Winner, I apologize.
You listed mechanics at $17 an hour.
Uh, let me see. It sounds right, but I'm looking just to verify.
If I'm wrong, I apologize.
No, it sounds right, I'm just, hey.
You also list lot attendance at $10 an hour.
Okay.
You think you are under-valuing what it's gonna cost you to get a mechanic in a lot of ten.
Under-valuing? I don't know.
Tell me this, I know you were trying to keep expenses down. You, you say you're gonna pay them $17 for six hours of work and lot attendance $10 for four hours? They're not gonna work eight hours?
I don't know. I mean, I have 30, we have a total of 35, 40 cars. Can I keep them busy? Don't know. I mean, it's just like I said, Mr. Winner, this is an estimate. I have never, well, I've never hired a mechanic to work on 35 cars.
I, I got you, I haven't either. I, I have a little sense though. How am I gonna get somebody to come to work, drive their car to work for $10 an hour for four hours?
People are desperate, I don't know. Here's, but the thing is, is.
You're gonna hire desperate people?
I don't care who I hire, really. Let me ask you this, I mean, you're, nevermind.
The new plan is to pay your drivers $10 an hour. Do I understand you right?
What it says.
That's what it says. Plan may change then.
Plans are always changing.
Got you.
Such as who my general manager might be.
The driver's wages were expected to be 37% of your income. The industry average is closer to 40% and the drivers almost always work on commission. They get a percentage of what they book. You think you're gonna have trouble getting drivers at $10 per hour, no bonuses? Or are they really gonna be working? Are they just gonna sit and collect their $10?
I think that would remain to be seen. I mean.
Can we agree that the incentive for a driver to go out and book more is that he gets more in the industry?
Say that again.
One of the incentives for a driver to get out there and perform service, drive around, take people, is they make more money. They get a percentage of the book.
Fair statement.
Okay. In your plan, you won't have that.
Um. No, for the purposes of this pro forma, I understand that people mostly work off of compensation, a percentage of the book. Yep, 40%, like you said, you know, that's usually what they do. But you also have other deals where some companies may pay for the gas, some people may split the gas. I mean, it's a complete operational issue that is different amongst every one of you guys. Not one of you guys has the exact same fee structure. And when I say I've allotted 37% as opposed to the industry's 4%, not ever having operated a cab company, I'm doing pretty good.
Out in this income, the $10 per hour, you're not doing any bonuses, paid vacation, ETO, none of that?
Benefits, it's there, health benefits.
Oh, it's $500.
It's an average. I believe that number was came directly from your client.
Farming out the dispatch, 85 cents a call?
Yes.
Um. Are the dispatchers only gonna answer the phone? You don't have them doing anything else like monitoring the cars, checking for breakdowns, emergencies?
No. Dispatches are gonna be.
Just answering the phone? Nothing else?
Nothing else. 85 cents a call.
That's two, $2,500 a month. But it's only answering phones, right?
Answering phones and dispatching, yes.
Now, you had the $4,000 a month for rent in your first pro forma and you have it again in this one. Um. What are you envisioning with that $4,000? What are you gonna get for that?
Well, there's two ways. I mean, I, I don't know. I don't know that answer.
Okay, let me ask another question. Um, if you've got 35 cars going out, you need space to park the cars, the cabs.
Right.
You also need space for the employees to park because they're gonna show up. And then you're gonna need the space for the other shift because they're gonna be there and just, you know, like, jump on the streets, say, here, here's the keys, they gotta come in, right?
Okay.
So you're gonna need a lot of, maybe what, 100, 120 cars?
Same.
You think 40,000 or $4,000 is a fair estimate for that?
Yes.
The tip rate, as I understand it, as George Alavan wrote down for me, is 12% of the gross book. You have it reduced by 3%.
Where are you?
I'm on page two of George's notes.
I don't recall those numbers. I've never put 12% to anything in any of my financials.
The 12% is the tip rate. Don't you have to pay that to federal government?
Sure, it's withholding.
I mean, whatever guide books, driver books, there's a tip rate that is assumed by the government, 12%, right? You gotta pay that.
It's a number you negotiate with them, I understand that.
Well, it's $56,000, 12%. Isn't it?
I don't know, I'm sorry.
Okay. If you're, if you're paying guys by the hour, you think you're gonna get drivers that are motivated to service the neighborhoods downtown? Are they just gonna sit at the big properties?
No, I mean, if you're owning them and they're in their employee, yeah, I mean, I told the board, I said, this is some of my understanding and I'm not in the industry, is why are we not capturing that fee with, when the person calls? The drivers will go out there and pick them up, that's a good book. You take me from my house to the airport, how much is that? 70 bucks?
Well, you've never driven a cab.
I'm just saying. I'm talking.
And do you think a cab driver being paid by the hour is really gonna wanna go out, service neighborhoods, budget hotels? They're gonna wanna sit.
I understand that. No, I understand that. You think they're gonna want to? No. If I tell them to, will they? Yes. Why? If they'll be fired?
Okay. Your old pro forma didn't have enough income to cover the expenses, we discussed, and your new one seems to have more income, but not enough expenses. Isn't that why George talked to you before he filed and said, it doesn't make sense?
We went through this, I don't remember the conversation.
But you remember seeking him out and talking.
I spoke to him, I did.
And you don't remember what he said?
That's not what I remember he said.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, as far as, we're on address that employee model part. You, you used to talk about this, as far as your $17 per hour mechanics, where did you get that?
I'm sorry. Ready to hear you.
So, sorry. As far as your mechanics in your pro forma, you indicate that you have $17 per hour.
Yes.
Where did you come up with that?
Um, it's kind of a.
Is it a wag? Wild-ass gas?
No. So I, I employ several mechanics at Las Vegas Limousine, so I know what I have to pay.
So, and they, and they work for 17 an hour?
Yep. That's what I hired them at.
When did you hire them?
I guess that's a misnomer, I apologize. That's when my partner would have hired them.
Okay, when were, when were they hired?
Couple years ago. If not longer, because he had owned a prior company.
You have any idea what the, what the current rate is for a mechanic?
No.
So at 17 an hour, that's what, probably what, about $37, $38,000 a year?
Tell me, I haven't gone up a doctor there.
Would you be surprised that most mechanics making these days 50,000 a year?
Does that come to, what does that come to? 20 bucks an hour?
More like 25.
Yeah, I don't know.
And you think you can get lot attendance for $10 an hour?
Yes.
Right. And when were those people hired?
I haven't hired anybody. You asked me, and you think I could get them?
Right, so you think you can get them for $10 an hour?
Yes, I do.
And is that based upon your limousine company?
That's based upon just my knowledge. I, I think that's what it is.
Would you be surprised to learn that the current rate for a lot of tenants is around $15 an hour?
Wouldn't be surprised. That's an operational issue.
An operational issue.
Yeah.
Uh. As far as, I don't know exactly what to call it, but your financial spreadsheet, your statement of operations, I don't know what you call this.
Okay. Which structure are you on?
I'm on, I'm still on the employee side.
Okay.
I don't see in there, in here, in, well, let's pull it back up. You indicate that you're gonna get a 6% loan for the taxi cabs.
Okay.
Are you gonna get an interest-only payment loan with a balloon at the end?
No, that'd be a principal and interest payment.
All right, can you show me in here where the principal payment's being made?
It's in the table here, interest alone.
I get the interest, I'm talking about the principal.
It just said it is.
Yeah.
Is it included on here?
It's in the balance sheet.
Huh?
The principal is on the balance sheet. See the loan?
I have, I've seen this one.
No, no, the balance sheet.
I'm looking at the balance sheet, I don't see, and I don't see principal payment.
That's an income statement.
I don't have it.
Independent cab company balance sheet.
Okay, so is that the, is that your 193, 480?
193, 480, correct. That is the short-term liability. That's the monthly payments times 12 for principal.
But in your revenue?
It's not an expense, only interest is an expense.
Oh, so you mean you don't have to account for paying $20,000 a month?
I did, on my balance sheet.
All right. But under your, under this sheet, under this sheet, you make $171,000.
Okay.
That's what your revenue shows. And it doesn't, this doesn't reflect $20,000 expense, but you have all these other expenses on it, such as officers, drivers' wages, dispatch, mechanics, management services, payroll taxes, health insurance, gasoline, you have all this stuff on the same sheet. But you don't show your biggest, 20-year business, biggest expenses, which is 20 grand a month.
Okay, Mr. Gibson, I'm trying to explain this to you and I hope I'm not being condescending or anything. That is not, those things that you're talking about do not go on an income statement. And if you want proof of that, look at the annual reports that you guys file. It does not have an expense for payment on loans. These are paper numbers. But do you think of depreciation expense, do you really think I get $23,000 in cash? No, I get a credit. It's a paper, it's a, it's a paper philosophy. But it doesn't account for, and if you wanna look at that 193,000, that money is accounted for up in my bank where it says current assets.
But under your income statement?
Income statement does not have payments for principal.
All right, but as far as your income statement, your profit is what, $171,000 a year?
Sorry, say that again.
Your profit?
Yes, it is.
It's $171,000 a year.
According to this pro forma, yes.
And you have a law, you have a successful law practice?
Do I? Yes.
And you're gonna leave your successful law practice, I'll let me back up. Your, this 171,000, does that factor any, any income taxes fee?
That makes zero sense.
Okay, you're making $171,000.
That's a profit that Independent Cab does.
On Independent, Independent, yeah, all right.
I would.
That's a pass-through, that passes through tax-wise to you and your wife.
Correct.
All right.
At that time, when it's realized.
All right, it's going to be realized at some point during the year.
Hey.
So it's going to be taxed and it's an LLC, you will be paying self-employment tax on top of that, and on top of the income tax, correct?
Correct.
So that roughly would be averaged around 40 to 45% a year?
Whatever it is, I, I have them counted.
All right, so your $171,000 profit reduces itself to about maybe 100 under your, under this assessment, okay? And you're gonna leave your successful law practice to operate a taxi cab to make $100,000 a year after taxes?
Isn't that my decision?
Well, I'm asking, that's, that's.
I mean.
That's a testimony before the board.
I've never, at any time, said I was gonna shut down my law business. I had told you I was getting rid of my litigation files and my, but I have, I have numerous cases that are pre-lit on which my paralegals, secretaries, receptionists are more than capable of handling on a day-to-day operation. And if I have $100,000 where I can make, if I can make that $100,000, are you saying that's bad?
What's your return on investment for a million dollars at that point?
But I don't have a million dollars returned in that. I have, according to this, 569, which would be 20%. And I ain't getting 20% in the market right now.
Now, you're in a, you just talked about your law practice and how you have claims that are pre-litigation. Those claims involve personal injuries, correct?
Yes.
Not all of them, but some of them.
Probably all of them. All right, it's pre-litigation.
All right, I don't see anywhere in your pro forma of either kind, either one, whether it's the employee or the lease model, where you account for any claim fee, claim payments of any kind.
For what?
Personal, for either personal injury or damages.
And Winner spoke about this. I have insurance.
Are all claims covered by insurance?
If not, yeah. Are all personal injury claims?
Are they? No.
Really? Okay.
All right, you're gonna operate with state, you said you're gonna operate with the state minimums, correct?
Okay.
For the 100,000, 300,000?
Yes, sir.
And $10,000?
Yes, sir.
You got, one of your taxes goes off tomorrow and tears up a Toyota RAV4, $20,000 car, you got $10,000 coverage. Where's the other 10,000 coming from to pay for?
I don't know if I have 10,000 coverage for.
Well, you said you had state minimums.
State minimums, not.
It's 10,000 for property damage.
Okay.
So, so in other words, your insurance costs are going up. Based upon what you just said.
They could, I explained that to you guys.
All right.
I explained that.
And your insurance also does.
Are you got a point with that? I mean, I don't understand. I don't understand what you're saying. Is there a claim? No, if there's not a claim, I love my insurance company handling. But okay, if there's an excess verdict, is that what you're talking about?
Or excess, or excess.
To the claim, then I'll have to deal with that at the time. And then that goes back to my 20% debt to equity. It's not gonna be, if I have to kick in more money, that is a capital expenditure, a paid-in capital to my company to cover that. That goes to my balance sheet.
And that impacts, that impacts your profitability as a company, doesn't it?
Good.
And again, we already talked about yesterday, you don't know what the insurance cost is to have a million dollars of coverage when you're on the airport property, do you?
No, I don't.
And your new pro forma does not contain any figures for someone to observe or view any dash cam videos, is that correct?
I don't think it does.
I don't, I didn't see anything in here for any expenses for training of any of your employee drivers.
That would go more to the, the actual employees that I'm hiring, the managers, if, um, let's see. You're on the, you're on the employee model, right?
Employee model.
All right, captain, managers, managers assistants, those would be their responsibilities.
You're not gonna have someone specializes in training necessarily?
I mean, specializes is kind of a strong word. I mean, I understand that stat, taxi cab industry, safety standards are regulated and governed by the NRS and the NAC. If somebody. the NRS and the NAC. If somebody knows the NRS and the NAC and is able to follow those standards, are they an expert specializing in it? Sure.
But you said that you plan, you plan to be different than everybody else, right?
I don't know if that means.
Well, you said that you're gonna be a boutique bar place, and you're gonna have specialty, and you're going to be safer and provide a better product.
Yeah.
But you're not gonna train them to be a better driver?
You're putting words in my mouth. I did not say that. Of course I'm gonna train them. The law requires me to train them. But you know what? And if I don't train them, I guarantee you, yes, it's gonna be knocking on my door.
Do you account for any type of road supervisors?
Not in the pro forma.
Not in the pro forma. So who's not gonna be accident?
I said it's not accounted for. There will be somebody. I represent several tow truck companies. I can call them.
Are you, how are you gonna handle breakdowns when they're on the street?
Just told you, I, the tow trucks will come and pick them up.
Want to charge?
Huh?
You know what they charge?
Yeah, it's on their tariff. Can't tell you how far, cause it's by distance and mile.
Is that accounted for in your pro forma?
No, it's not.
And you think that a vehicle's gonna do, your pro forma estimates twenty, basically five gallons of gas a day?
I think that's what I said.
Would you be surprised that typically a taxi cab does between a hundred and fifty and two hundred miles a day?
Like I said.
Basically double what you expended or include.
I'm gonna find out.
This is easy. And yesterday, you kind of, kind of hinted at it a little while ago. Basically, hey, it's my money, if I, if I run this business and it doesn't work and I lose money, that's on me, right?
I think that's on every business owner.
Okay, but it also would impact every driver that leaves their current workplace where they work and go works for you, where they lose their seniority, does it not?
You're basing it total of two hypotheticals at one time, and I'm not here to speculate if somebody, if I go bankrupt and if I hire people. Those, those are not my goals going into this business. So yeah, I'll tell you what. If I were to go bankrupt, and if I had thirty-five drivers, would you accept them at yellow check or star?
And a little time.
Okay.
But you would agree that any drivers that you hire away from any other company, if your company were to go under, that would impact them?
Impact everybody.
I believe that's all the questions I have.
I just have a few, um, and I apologize if this was already asked. I missed the answer. Yeah, the limo drivers that are employed at LBL, how are they paid?
Minimum wage guaranteed.
So they're.
I, I didn't hear the answer.
Minimum wage. Um, not, they're not paid by commission.
No, it's kind of similar to, I think, what the cabs do is they, you have to guarantee the minimum wage in order to get the their booking, and so if they have a low booking, you still gotta pay them the minimum wage, and you know, you keep, they keep going on that, you have to let them go, cause you can't run into the negative. But it works out better for them to be percentage compensation.
So it is commission, if they don't make minimum wage, then you supplement?
Correct.
Okay, what's the commission structure?
Uh, I'm not exactly sure, I apologize.
Yeah. Um, with respect to this second, uh, pro forma, when was, what, what was the date it was prepared?
Ballpark, I can't give you the exact date, I could probably look it up on my computer as the day I printed it out, but it would have been, I would say, second or third week of July?
Of this year.
Of this year, okay.
And, um, the date that you printed it out, was that the date that it was submitted to the taxi cab authority?
Either that day or the following day, depending on whether I was down in that part of the area down.
Okay. Um, so you believe it was prepared and submitted, um, in July of this year?
Ah, and yeah, I, I, that's my best guess. I, I just don't remember it in August, so yeah.
Okay, the information that you used to prepare this amended pro forma, was it exclusively gained from information that you gathered through discovery in this case?
Exclusively now, ninety-plus percent probably. I mean, you can go through and you can look and see meters, uh, converting cars to, you know, stuff like that.
Right.
So I, I, I did as best as I could to incorporate your guys' comments.
And, and the, the percentage of the comments that you incorporated to complete this report was over ninety percent?
Yeah, I mean, I, one example, let's just say. One example of that was Mr. Malavan said, I would need forty-two cars to open up service because you're gonna have spares, the breakdowns, and stuff like that. But then again, he also said you've got to account for a ten percent vacancy. So if I figured I had ten percent vacant, cars not being operated, let's just say that's three. And then if I got five more cars, that would give me eight cars to work as spares and or breakdowns. So that's like, I took the, the gist of what he was saying and tried to incorporate it into what I thought would work.
So using your example, the breakdown cars, when you prepared your original pro forma, you didn't even think of that possibility of breakdown cars, did you?
No, I didn't put it in there.
No further questions.
Person, do you wanna redirect yourself in some way?
Not at all.
Edgar has some questions.
I do not. I have no questions, Mr. Chairman. Not at this time.
Um, I have a few questions just for verification, my own one. I believe your testimony a moment ago was that ninety percent of the inputs to your amended pro formas filed in July of this year retained from the discovery process where you were essentially educated by the intervenors on what was necessary.
Exactly. I, in discovery, I sent out interrogatories to each of the intervenors asking, hey, if you contend, I'm gonna paraphrase, I apologize, if you contend my pro forma is insufficient, incorrect, inaccurate in any way, tell me why. And that was the responses that I received, and those were the, uh, ninety percent that I put into the new pro formas.
My interpretation of your testimony is that you performed no cash flow analysis. You prepared an income statement and a profit and loss statement, but no cash flow analysis.
Correct.
It's also my interpretation from the documents in your testimony that there are, there is no market backup for any of the inputs. You made estimates, but you don't, you did not document for the authority where you came up with a labor rate, or you came up with an interest rate. You just, you selected those numbers and there's no, I get what's on the face of the pro forma, but there is no documentation as to where you got the inputs.
Um, I think on the interest rate, it was from bankrate.com, and it might have been referenced, I think, in, in one of my documents. Um, let me see if I can pull it out.
This one.
I'll, I'll grant you, I've read it very carefully, several times.
Okay.
That is your one input.
Okay.
You, I do have that. Do you agree with that?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Will you agree that's the only backup for any input that you have in your document? As opposed to, yeah, I, what is based on my narratives. I, I agree with whatever my narratives are, that's all I have.
And there is no documentation of commitments from any financing sources.
There is no commitments.
And your selected interest rate, cost of money is six percent.
Borrowed money, yes.
There's no documentation from Chevrolet other than your testimony. There's no documentation from Chevrolet that they can provide you seventeen units.
Uh, just my testimony. I mean, I get documentation, but again, um, at this time, I just don't, didn't think it was prudent.
Any board members have any other questions?
No question.
Thank you. That will come. Are interveners ready on exhibit three, or do you wanna do it at one o'clock?
I was just looking through it. I haven't had a chance to go through it.
We'll still do that at one o'clock, tie that up. Do you have any other proffers that you wish to make as to exhibits documentation?
No.
So the only two exhibits that you would be proffering are free, which is reserved for um, the materials you use for your affirmative and, um, this prosecutor's testimony, which is, has been admitted.
Obviously, we adopt the ones that you guys have already put in.
Well, the applications are.
Applications and the, I think you'd mentioned like four or five other things, uh, confidential stuff.
The confidential exhibit.
I'm asking you if you're proffering.
No, I'm done, thank you, it's not in the record.
I'm, I'm, I'm resting.
Very good.
With the exception of the exhibit three.
So we'll return on the, on the case in chief, we will return only on exhibit three at one o'clock.
Okay.
Um, otherwise applicant has rested, and you may now proceed with your case.
Okay.
And I don't mean you have to go first. If you wanna tag somebody else, that's up to you.
You sat there.
Yeah, I did. I'm gonna tag.
Well, I could be Chinese, though.
I'm gonna tag this winner.
Here it is. Okay, there you go. Um, we'll call.
Um, as a, just a housekeeping matter, we submitted our exhibits, we were supposed to, and we didn't bring extra copies, cause I figured we gave you one and nine.
You got me. I don't know if they were ever filed, were they, Mr. Witter? Cause I think he did give them to me, but I don't know if they were filed with the authority.
Well, I, I think I paid Don to do that. My assistant.
I just don't know. So I'm just classifying, Bob. Did you look through the book? If you wanna check to make sure they're in the books, I have no objections.
Yeah, let's make sure that my belief that they are. Witness exhibit.
Yeah, I got six hundred books here, which one?
Exhibit. Do you have the, no. It's in the green, it's over here, witness and exhibits, no. Right, right there, two volumes, witnesses and exhibits, one and two.
Okay. Anderson. Well, it says, intervenor Desert Cab has got the testimony summary. Oh yeah, it's got the supplements, so it is there. Yes, you want to make ten? I think that's when we were supposed to produce the documents that would be responsive to the subpoena issues, not necessarily specific ones.
So you're just gonna need to.
What do you want George to say?
All, all of these in?
Oh my.
Hey now.
Are all of these what you were talking about earlier that was actually into evidence?
These have not been, the, these have not been moved into evidence because somebody hasn't qualified.
You're talking about our exhibits?
Yeah, so.
Well, George is gonna talk.
Right.
And I'll, I guess I, I will offer them now, if you are exhibits six through seventeen.
For ease of, uh, proceeding, does anybody have objections to witnesses and exhibits, volume ones and one and two coming in? Instead of doing these piecemeal, it'd be easier just to put both binders.
I think that makes sense.
Objection. Let me take a quick look at.
Well, we can argue whether it's good evidence or not.
Oh, absolutely.
I have no, I have no problem admitting them either. I think you guys just give the evidence the weight you deserve it. To be felt.
Yeah. Nope. Nope.
Not the ones with the green.
Ah, yes.
Volume one and two.
You gave, you guys.
Yep.
Go. No objection.
So, for the purpose, we're still on the record, for the purposes of, for purposes of the record, um, witnesses and exhibits, volume one will be exhibit five, and volume two will be exhibit six. And those are admitted and they are non-confidential. Madam Secretary, remember that there are some projections and marketing materials in one of these, and those will have to be separated out, right? Those are not part of the witnesses and exhibits, volume one. You combine some, for our purposes, you combine some stuff into one one.
Correct.
Okay, so witnesses and exhibits, volume one, is five, and volume two, six. So the reason I wanted to do it that way is now we don't have to spend a bunch of time playing with exhibits.
Fair enough.
Okay. Go ahead.
Nicole Wood-Bellman.
Valahan, we raise your right hand. You solemnly swear that the testimony that you are about to give to the cab, taxi cab authority or to the state of Nevada will be the truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Would you state your name and what you do for a living?
Uh, George Ballaban. I'm the president of Desert Cab Incorporated and a member of Burton Valley LLC, Blue Desert LLC.
Um, Desert Cab, is that a family business?
Yes, it is.
Coming out of its inception.
My father obtained it in the early to mid-sixties and began running it. Handed it off to Ray Chinwith, who then was managing it for him while I was in college. I left college and began running it. I drove eight-seventies while I was in college in the summers of seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, and then I began working for the cab company in nineteen seventy as a manager.
Could I stress that Mr. Ballaban speak up?
I was just getting, oh, sorry, Mr. Ballaban, you don't need to speak up. Okay, I'm not sure everything you're saying is getting taken on record.
He's never been accused of being quiet.
I, typically, he's like shouting at us at regular meetings, so.
Okay, so you, you drove for your gas company, and then you started working as a manager, did the shop?
In, in nineteen seventy-nine, when I started not driving, I was, uh, learning the business, working in the garage as a mechanic, learning how the meters work, uh, dealing with drivers, running the finance for my father, and, uh, more of the management of the cab companies from Ray Chinwith in San Bruno, Rooney, who ran Ellis Cab, we were at the same facility.
How long have you been, um, the president and the CEO, the boss?
Well, I would, again, I didn't own it, or was just an employee in nineteen seventy-nine, but I believe I was running it then. Um, we incorporated it in nineteen eighty-seven, and that's when I became the president.
Got you. Um, you, you feel you are qualified as an expert in the cab industry and part kind of that?
I do.
Um, do you know of anyone more knowledgeable?
I, I believe that there are plenty of people in the industry that have been in the industry a long time, Brent Bell, Cheryl Mapp, uh, my bailin' that have done a lot of the things I've done. I don't know if they've done it as long as I have, in all the different positions I have. Um, so I would say there's comparable people that are in the industry that have been in for a long time, but most of the people I learned from are all passed away now.
Not because you.
Well, no. I had nothing to do with it.
I am striking that question.
Did you have occasion, I think in the last year or so, to look over the original application filed by independent cab?
Yes, I have.
And did you review the proposals and the pro forma? And what was suggested in that application?
Yes, I did.
Did you have any criticisms as to the reasonableness of the original pro forma?
Um, I did. Yeah, I had a lot of issues or questions with the original.
Um, let's go through those. Just for expedience sake. The documents that we produced as exhibits, those are actual invoices and things that you at Desert Cab incurred. Expenses that you've incurred to help demonstrate your testimony to the board.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Let's just go through, in, in whatever order you want, what you found striking and odd or unreasonable in the first pro forma.
In the, in the first pro forma, and again, this would have been in my derogatories and I think my prepared testimony as well. There was, there was no accounting for, after purchasing the car, there was no accounting for making it into a taxi cab, which involves a a meter. Some type of system for the GPS. A two-way radio, which is required for some type of two-way communication with the drivers. Credit card terminal, because he showed that he was getting credit card income, so we need credit card terminal in it. All the labor to actually install all that equipment. The data to make that all work, because you need data charges for not only the credit cards, but for the GPS, which are, credit card can't run on the same data as the GPS, because the credit card one has some rules about the security of it, because credit cards are being processed over it, so there's multiple data charges. So there was a lot of that that was, was missing. As well as the actual decals that go on the side of the car, the striping that goes on the side of the car, everything to make it called an independent cab. So top signs, trunk signs, everything that turns it from the Camry or whatever it was going to be into a taxi cab. And that was a lot of expense, as well as a lot of labor.
Did you have a estimate based on your experience as to that expense? Just total. Making the car into a cab?
Um, I, I, I believe that I put it in, in my derogatories. The, the labor and the wiring and the decals and all of that was going to be well over a thousand dollars, but for me, our meters are nine hundred and fifty dollars a piece. I don't know what kind of meter he was gonna get, but again, I could only look at it from what my experience was. A meter's nine hundred and fifty dollars. Credit card terminals were several hundred dollars. Top signs were four hundred dollars, rear signs are a hundred and fifty dollars. Two-way radio, three hundred to five hundred dollars, they were available used for several hundred dollars, but that's gonna involve, once you buy them used, they're gonna be at the wrong radio frequency, so you're gonna have to take them to somebody to get them onto your radio frequency if you add one. So it was thousands of dollars.
You, you had the, some criticism, and I think applicant made modifications with the second as to having thirty-five taxis and only thirty-five cars. Being able to run thirty-five.
But again, from my experience in the taxi cab industry, especially in Las Vegas, the, because of the heat, the number of miles we put on, kind of an industry standard has always been that we want twenty percent spares. I would say, if you fast forward to now, unless you're getting, you're gonna have a garage that has a very large inventory of parts, because of supply chain issues and things, might want to have more spares, because it just takes longer to get things to fix cars. That's just the reality of it, as well as to buy cars. So historically, it's always been twenty percent. At my company, I've always been higher than that. I've always felt that the price of the car was not that big of an expense, but over the life of the car, as much as maintaining it. So we would have more cars, so we never would blow a shift because of a breakdown. So in his pro forma, he didn't have any spares. So I just was being conservative in using the twenty percent, so he needed at least seven spare. And the cost to buy them and finance them, turn them into cars and everything that goes with cab company.
In the original pro forma, there was no airport charges, two dollars and forty cents.
So I, I just heard the testimony of the cross-examination. I, when we file our statements to the taxi cab authority, the annual statements, while the airport revenue and the excise tax isn't as an expense, it is taken off of our revenue. So our revenue shows, and right underneath it is the trip charge, the excise tax in the airport. They all come off our revenue as we're reporting it in our paper, because they are true expenses and they're large expenses, and they were missing in his pro forma altogether. I've heard him now say that in his original pro forma, those were intended to be pass-throughs, but he didn't state that in his original pro forma, so I mentioned that he's not accounting for these expenses.
Well, he, he made a mistake on the original pro forma, the excise tax, he based it on the lease of the meter.
He took the three percent times the, yes, he took the seven hundred and fifty dollars a week lease payment, times the number of cars, times the three percent, rather than what they were actually booking, which is what the three percent is charged on. Correct.
You had some criticism or skepticism about the insurance that is for the cars, liability insurance. Could you explain those?
Again, not being privy to what, who he's talked to, or what he found available. I've been in this business a long time, and there are very few people that will write insurance for taxi cabs. I have had umpteen agents and the number of insurance carriers out there are very limited. There are some now, to my knowledge right now, there's a paratransit group that is available, that I believe writes, and I don't want to speak for them, the Yellow, Tucker, Star Group. Bell Insurance insures themselves through a insurance company they own. And some of us are insured through a company I'm with, which is Anchor Group Management, which is a buckle insurance company. But again, when I look at what he had in his pro forma, it doesn't tell me whether it's first dollar coverage, what the limits are. I believe that in order to operate at the airport, you need a million dollars in coverage. So I don't know how he can operate at the state limits and operate at the airport, and if he couldn't operate the airport, he, he's not, he can't run a cab. So when I see the sixty-three hundred dollars, again, and I had to question whether or not there's an SIR in there, or if it's first dollar coverage, because he financed the cars, which none of us do. We all pay cash for our cars, because none of the banks will take the cars as collateral, because we ruin them, turning them into taxi cabs. So and I don't know of an insurance company that will write collision on a taxi cab. They'll only write liability insurance. So again, I just questioned it because it seemed like a very low number, if in fact he was gonna have to buy full coverage, because he was taking a loan out on the cars. And again, these are all assumptions, because the pro forma didn't really state what the insurance policy was by.
Um, what's your insurance policy now? You have a million coverage?
I have a one million dollar coverage.
And you have an SIR?
A twenty-five thousand dollar SIR.
And only liability after that. So you pay the first twenty-five grand?
I pay the first twenty-five thousand dollars, and then I have a million dollars insurance.
I don't mean to interrupt, but is that can you explain that a little bit more? How, is that per vehicle? Is that, that twenty-five thousand?
The, the twenty-five thousand dollars SIR is per incident, per, per incident, per accident.
Oh, per incident.
Per accident. So yeah, so that, it's like a deductible, and it's a self-insured retention. So any accident I have, I'm responsible to fix my own car, because I don't have collision and twenty-five thousand dollars towards whatever else.
Whatever the other incident.
Whatever else. It's my fault.
It's a point.
Correct.
Is that?
Yes, thank you. I didn't know.
No, thank you. You're doing my job.
Per unit. Or incident.
Um, did you have some concerns on the original pro forma with respect to maintenance and expensive maintenance?
Uh, yes, in his original pro forma, he had, I believe, eleven thousand dollars a month for maintenance, but he also had, I believe, eight thousand dollars for mechanics. So I kind of added those two together and came up with roughly nineteen thousand dollars that he had for maintenance. And when I did a composite, looked at how many trips he said he was gonna do, from my experience, knowing how long a trip is, what the paid mileage percentage is, I came up with how many miles he would travel. From my experience, and I put this into my evidence, the I operate at about twenty-five cents per mile in maintenance costs. So I felt that the number of miles he was doing, it is nineteen thousand dollars, probably a good ten thousand dollars a month, low on the maintenance cost. And I would preface that by saying, that twenty-five cents per mile that I believe is the industry standard is going to be operating your own shop. That is, you have your own mechanics, you have your own alignment rack, your own tire machines, you're changing your own oil, buying your own parts, you have a parts department. You, you're not gonna be able to operate that if you're going to take the cars to the dealership, unless they were under warranty, but if you're, if you're gonna farm the work out, you, you couldn't do it at twenty-five cents a mile. That is, you're doing it in-house yourself, that you would be operating at that price. So again, conservatively, I thought that he was gonna be low on that, and then that made me also think I didn't see anywhere in his pro forma where he was buying a line or a tire machine or lifts to work on the cars or diagnostic scanning tools. The, the cars today, I'm sure all know that it's not like it was in the old days, that a garage mechanic can work on a car. Everything is done online, you have to have scanners to plug into the onboard diagnostic systems of the car to get codes, to find out what's wrong with it, which involves, again, these scanners that have to be updated each and every year. You have to pay for subscriptions through manual manuals and, and there's a lot of other expense. And the cynic in me believes that that's the dealerships that have made it so that you can't try to fix your car yourself, you have to bring it. And if you want to fix it yourself, you have to go buy all this equipment. And that equipment is not only expensive to buy, it's expensive to maintain each and every year as you renew the subscriptions. So again, I believe you have to have all that, and I didn't see where he was buying that in his pro forma, in order to operate at even at twenty-five cents.
So the, the maintenance costs he estimated were low, in your experience, even at twenty-five cents, which is what you pay. He was under eating that?
Yes, I, he was under buying eight to ten thousand dollars a month.
And then he would still, even if he were gonna get hit to the twenty-five cents, he'd have to buy all that shop equipment, as mentioned.
Or have access to it, yes.
Um, the taxes, I think you thought were left out.
Well.
To the Valium's.
Again, as, as just off the top of my head, I was looking at what his charge per month was, and, and I thought to myself, there's three hundred dollars for the medallions, there's seventy dollars per car to county business tax, the three hundreds to the TA. Then there's that's the county business license, there's a city business license, there's a Henderson business license, there's a Boulder City license, all these licenses, as well as the garage license. I mean, there, it's endless in that state. I mean, it's, the, the, the fees that we pay here, and just are only getting worse, I don't believe it was covered in, in, in his number of a thousand dollars a month. So I thought he was under. It wasn't a gigantic number, but it adds up, because I believe he was, you know, five hundred to seven, eight hundred dollars a month, low on that.
Well, and understandably, he's never run a cab company. So he didn't know all these costs.
And I don't myself, because new ones seem to come each and every year. Or go up.
Um, you have concerns that there wasn't anybody to inspect the cabs daily, you know, and the breakdowns, that kind of thing?
Uh, and again, in the original pro forma, it was a lease model, and part of the TA regulations are that each and every cab needs to be inspected each and every day. So I lease taxi cabs, are leased cabs, come back to the yard once a day, every day, and have to be inspected. You could have a mechanic stop doing what he's doing, which isn't very efficient, because he's being paid twenty-some dollars an hour to inspect the car, so you have to have, have to. You have somebody else that's going to do that, because it's more efficient. So I didn't see where he had anybody that was going to be looking at these cars each and every day as they came through, because it's required to do that, to document that, inspect it, have that available, to show the taxi cab authority that you're looking at, looking at those cars each and every day. So again, I was just pointing out that I didn't see where that was accounted for. As well as, I, I believe, we talked about it, but the in that lease model, I didn't see where he built in anything for breakdowns, flat tires, the toes. The, all the emergencies and things that happen to taxi cabs since they're running twenty percent.
Yeah, how many incidents does Desert Cab have, let's say, per day, whether it's an accident or a breakdown or?
Well, I'm.
You're a bigger company.
Considerably bigger, but yeah, I twenty, thirty. A, a, a lot of incidents. Because again, there's a, there's a, it's twenty-four, seven. There's a, a lot of interactions. The, the idea that you're just interacting with the customer is, is wrong. The, my dispatchers are interacting more with the drivers than they interact with the customers, and in a way, the lease driver is a customer of mine. But we have to monitor the radio. The credit card machines don't always work, so we have to be prepared to do a manual credit card over the radio. Again, the breakdowns, be able to call it a gesture out at the scene of an accident, to report an accident. Can't get through a gate code, call back a customer. I mean, there's just endless interactions that you have to be having, not only with the customer you're trying to pick up, but more often with the driver, not the customer. That is, the big expense for our dispatch is to have somebody that are twenty-four, uh, twenty-four, seven, to monitor the safety of the driver, when they hit the emergency light, when they're having some problem, they've got an unruly customer, they need the taxi cab authority, they need the police. It's, it's more than just answering the phone to service the rock.
Well, as for the thirteen dollars an hour with no health insurance or other benefits, can you hire a dispatcher for that?
Well, I don't have dispatchers anymore. I actually formed with Yellow, YCS Companies and Bell, we formed a universal dispatch, but I know that a universal dispatch, which we own, now are a brand-new dispatcher. In order to get one, if we are lucky, we can get somebody to come for fifteen dollars an hour with the promise that if they work out after thirty days, we'll pay them sixteen dollars an hour, and if they work out thirty more days, we'll pay them seventeen dollars an hour, along with a PTO that's required by law now, the paid time off, that is a new law in Nevada, as well as health insurance benefits, paid vacation, all, all the things that go along with it. So no, uh, I don't know where they are, if they are. They, they surely aren't experienced dispatchers, because they're in demand all over town, needing dispatchers for all kinds of.
Um, is the estimate by applicant to have three dispatchers reasonable to you?
If you're doing it yourself, and you need to monitor it twenty-four, seven, I don't know, again, how the math works on that. That no one's gonna work seven days a week, so I would, no, I don't know how you would do it with three.
Did you have a total of expenses that were missing in the original pro forma, in your estimation?
On page three.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, the I believe that it was missing expenses of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in his startup, and another three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in annual at a minimum.
That makes the proposed pro forma, the first one sensible or not?
Based on adding these expenses in, I, I, the first pro forma was outside, I don't, it was not.
They haven't talked about rent, that's right. Is four thousand a reasonable estimate for rent?
Again, when I saw the four thousand dollars in there, I, again, I'm not privy to what. Again, when I saw the four thousand dollars in there, I, again, I'm not privy to what. What deals Mr. Carson could have had. When I, uh. Me and Brent Bell, our families bought Virgin Valley Cab from the Freuses when Freus companies went under. Yellow bought all they could, and there was one company left that they couldn't buy. And so me and Brent Bells, our families bought the company, not because we needed more cabs, but because we were selling to Captain and we thought we could flip it for some quick money. Which was a mistake because it didn't happen. But we ended up with that company. I could not run it at my facility because I had on-demand sedan limousine and desert cab there and there was just no room. So it moved to uh. The Bell facility and, and he operated. So, uh. When it came time that I wanted to, uh, COVID happened, everything went on, uh, we shut Virgin Valley that cap down. I decided I would pay Brent off, buy him out of it. And I was gonna bring it back to my yard, which again, I don't have the room, so I had to look for parking just to park the cars. And. In my neighborhood, which again, is just a construction neighborhood. I found a lot where I could park sixty cars and I was gonna be paying, I, well, I did pay thirty five hundred dollars a month just for parking spaces. So I, I saw that Brent was gonna be paying four thousand and I'm thinking, I, I, I just don't know where you would get a shop. Room to park. Way more than sixty cars because of the shift change and the, you're gonna have forty cabs, but if you use thirty five of them. You're gonna send the thirty five out, other drivers that are gonna replace them, you, you need room to park a hundred cars. So I'm thinking, I don't know where you would be able to buy, get an office, get ground, park that many cars. A garage to work on for four thousand dollars, I might be, I'm not saying it's not out there, I've never seen it. I couldn't find anything even comparable to that in my neighborhood, anywhere near. Something like that price, so I believe that's extremely low.
Um, how about we shift to the, uh, the latest pro forma? That is an employee, uh, raise.
Yeah.
And you had a chance to review that yesterday afternoon?
I did.
For the first time?
Yes.
Okay, um. Could you cite some things to the? Board that you found in here you thought were missing or unreasonable estimates? First, let's start off with the excise tax.
Well.
What is it? And is it in this new pro forma?
Are we talking about, there's two new pro formas, which one are we on?
He said the employee.
Yeah, so. In the new pro forma, he comes up with his incomes based on. The revenue per trip out of the TA statistics. So I, my observation from that number is that revenue needs to be reduced. Like I reported to the taxi cab authority by three percent, which is the excise tax. As well as. The two dollars forty cents to go to the airport. So his top income line of whatever it is, four hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and eighty one thousand, two hundred and four dollars a month. Fourteen thousand dollars and change is an excise, is excise tax that's gonna reduce that and another. Almost twelve thousand dollars is gonna be airport fee. Those two numbers. Are. Twenty five thousand dollars reduction and that twenty five thousand dollar reduction, when you're only making thirteen thousand, puts him. Way upside down, just those, those two expenses, which. I understand his argument, you can't call them an expense. Okay, they are a reduction in the revenue on the top line, and that is how we report that. The taxi cab.
So, under his pro forma, he's making about thirteen thousand dollars per month. Right, that, that supposedly net after expenses, that's what he reports.
Yeah.
And you're saying that there's twenty five thousand dollars. The revenue has to be reduced because of excise and the airport fee.
If he's gonna operate at the airport, which, again, he could get no drivers if he wasn't gonna be a lobbier at the airport. The average, the industry averages that twenty percent of all trips come off of the airport. Um, so doing that math, yes, between the excise tax and the airport, it's gonna reduce, it's gonna be. Twelve thousand dollars upside down.
The, uh, did you have concerns about workers' compensation at six percent?
The, again, I'm not sure where he's getting that, the NCCI rate of, for, for cab drivers is higher than the six percent. Um, I belong, my, my company belongs to a, along with multiple companies in, in town, belonged to the. Preferred transportation self-insured group, uh, uh, PT Sig, for our workers' comp. Um, I talked to, and reached out to them to find out if it's a brand new company with no experience. What kind of rate would we be willing to give them? And they're telling me it's going to be without loss experience and people that haven't run a cab company before. They would be lucky to be paying eight or nine percent, not six. So again, it's not a gigantic number, but based on size of his wages, it's. Multiple thousands a month, an extra three thousand dollars a month in extra expense, being conservative, even if we get it at seven and a half percent for workers' compensation, six percent.
Um, the mechanic's at seventeen dollars an hour, a lot of attendants at ten dollars an hour. What's been your experience?
Um, so. Mr. Gibson kind of already asked this question of him, the, currently, we are able to hire in our operation, we can hire. What we would call an oil changer, someone that can come in and help, like a mechanic's assistant for fifteen dollars an hour. But a mechanic is going to be. Maybe you can get lucky buying somebody at nineteen dollars an hour that is mechanic, he's not a certified mechanic, he's just a mechanic. That can do some things for you, so seventeen dollars an hour, you're not gonna, at least we're unable to find any mechanics and we're advertising. On newspaper, on all kinds of advertising, web boards. On a lot of the, can't think of the names enough, but the, the online services where you're gonna put these out there. So to get ASC certified mechanics, it's gonna be over twenty dollars an hour. And the, the idea that. We're gonna find mechanics for seventeen dollars an hour, but they're only gonna get paid for working six hours a day. Uh, uh, again, I, I don't know where those people are. I mean, I would love to find those people because I, I think everybody in the industry would hire them, is fill-in spots, uh, but I just don't, I don't think. If somebody's a good mechanic, he's gonna want more than seventeen dollars an hour and he's not gonna work a six-hour day. That can happen, and a lot of tendents, the same experience for us, which we have a lot of tendents. We start our lot of tendents at thirteen dollars an hour and our lot of tendents last. A week, two weeks, it's just a revolving door. And that's at thirteen dollars an hour with health insurance, with paid time off, with other benefits. And a full ship. Uh, again, I don't know where the people are, I'm not saying they don't exist, but I have looked. And I do not know how you're gonna find someone to work four hours a day for ten dollars an hour. I don't believe those people exist, if they do exist, they're gonna. Disappear very quickly, or they're gonna get into the industry and find out that they can come work at my place and make thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour, I, I, or fifteen at Yellow. So I just, I don't, I don't think that's realistic. I, I, I think those numbers were put in. We're working the pro forma in reverse, how much could he pay in adjusting the hours? I don't know that, but that, that's what it appears is.
Didn't you testify to that, uh? I guess it's the opposite from yesterday, the first thing is he started working on his lease and how much money he could generate by leasing. And then worked backwards from their own costs. So you're saying he's doing the same thing just the other way around?
I don't know that, that's what it appears. I think, so, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not sure, but I don't, I don't believe that he can hire, again, that's my opinion. People for ten dollars an hour, they're gonna work four-hour days.
That happened.
I don't believe so.
Okay, um, how about the, the plan to pay his drivers now a wage, not leasing, but ten dollars per hour? How does that, uh, strike you in the industry?
Again, this was brought up a little bit in the, in the cross-examination of him. The. We didn't have long to look at this, but I, I see in the pro forma that it's ten dollars an hour. You can take that as a percentage of what he says he's going to book and it turns out to be thirty seven percent in wages he's paying. The industry pays while. Mr. Carson is arguing it's only two, three, four percent, the industry pays close to forty percent. In wages, before paid time off, before bonuses, before paid vacation. So I don't know. If he just pays what we pay comparably in the industry, that three percent. Is another twenty thousand dollars a month in expenses that again, makes his. Number, his thing even worse. Um, now, he can say, well, I'm not gonna do that, I'm not gonna pay them. And I'm thinking, well. I don't know, other than that it's a boutique company, I don't know why the cab driver or any person would go work for him. To drive his car for ten dollars an hour when he can come drive in any cab company in town and make more, not only. He can make more wage as well as have more benefits. I, I don't know. What the draw for him to get these employees is. Now, maybe, again, he has said that he has this network of people, my contention, just a contention would be if he can get those people. When those people are in the pit at the airport and talking to the cab driver next to him and find out that the cab driver next to him is making way more than. He's, the guy's making an independent cab, he's not gonna be an independent cab very long. Because I, because I, it's all human nature, we're going to go, you know, the, the idea of being a boutique company and work for somebody where they know your first name, it, that all sounds great. My managers know the first name of all of my drivers, so that, that in itself doesn't make it. Um, so again, I don't. I think he's gonna have to at least pay the prevailing wage to get drivers and the prevailing, and I didn't cover the bonuses here, but just the prevailing wage. Is an extra twenty thousand dollars a month in expenses that are not in his pro forma.
Um, you had some concerns about the dispatching expense of eighty five cents a call?
I, I spoke a little bit about that under the other pro forma, I, the. He's got quotes from somebody that is gonna charge him per call and, and those services are out there. Again, we run universal dispatch, those services are out there that will, but they're talking about handling the call that's. Somebody calling for a taxi. I, I, I can't speak for him, I don't know, I don't believe there's a service that is going to, for twenty five hundred dollars a month, monitor. Twenty four seven like we're required to, the cab drivers for the safety of the cab driver. It, 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 they can't be sitting waiting for the phone to answer, they have to be monitoring the drivers for. The driver hitting the emergency light in his car, that he's in distress, that he's got a breakdown, a flat tire, that, that's not a cut, that's not a phone call, that's. The, the, what the dispatcher's job is, is to monitor the safety of those drivers. So. Again, I, I don't know, because I don't know who these people are, but he's got this based on. This call volume, which looks to me more like a call volume of customers, not his drivers and them being monitored. So I don't think that you can do it for twenty five hundred dollars a month.
The, you, you earlier talked about the four thousand dollars for, uh. Brent. On the old pro forma, but that's the same problem on the new one.
Uh, again, uh, for me, it goes back to. You could have a smaller lot and not have enough parking spaces, and there are some cab companies that probably do, I'm not one of them, I have enough parking for my employees. But the harder the parking gets, the further the driver has to walk to work. Uh, if they have to park around the corner, quarter of a mile away to walk to work, again, that all comes to. Our competition amongst us in the industry to get drivers. So if he's gonna pay less than we pay, offer less benefits than we offer and make the drivers. Park three blocks away and walk in the heat or the rain to the yard. I, 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 I think it's gonna make it not impossible, but much harder for him to hire employees. Because I would think they're gonna be, well, I'm gonna go work at Whittlesey where there's a parking garage that I can park right next to my car, I, I, I don't wanna walk. I, I, so I, I think that he's gonna need a lot bigger than what I think he can get for four thousand dollars.
Um, you mentioned, um, the tip rate of twelve percent, could you explain your thoughts on that?
The, the industry signed, uh, TRDA's tip reporting. At Stanford, tip, it's a tip reporting compliance with the IRS. Um, the negotiated rate is that the drivers are required to report twelve percent of the book. As tips each and every day. That, of course, from the IRS is to get our, get the companies to pay their shares. Idea. Again, when you take his four hundred and eighty thousand dollars a month book and realize, okay. It's gotta, the drivers are gonna have to declare twelve percent on that, that twelve percent is an extra fifty some thousand dollars in wages. That aren't really wages, but they're declared wages and he as the employer has to pay the payroll related tax on that and the workers' compensation on that because it's a declared wage. So. Between his fifteen percent payroll related that he has in his, his pro forma and the, conservatively, this. Seven and a half percent I save from workers' comp, that's another twenty two and a half percent. On the fifty six thousand dollars in extra wages that he has to report that are, he's not paying, but that are the tips that are declared. Again, that's another, I don't know what the number is, but it's another thirteen thousand dollars in expenses that are not in his pro forma. The. Again, the, the, the idea that to pay hourly, which. Again, it doesn't mean that's what he's going to do, but it's in the pro forma is so. Strange to the industry and the way the industry operates, I'm not saying it can't happen, but. Cab drivers are human beings and human beings are going to do what they can to, what benefits them the most. And just an opinion, but I believe that if a cab driver is being paid an hourly rate. Then for him. The most important thing is gonna be the tips that he makes. Because he's, he's just guaranteed a ten dollar rate, that the ride that Brent talked about going out in the neighborhood and get that seventy dollar ride. Seventy dollar ride doesn't matter to you, you're being paid by the hour, you don't get a portion of the seventy dollar ride, you get the same hourly fee. Speaking for myself, I drove cab, if you pay me an hourly rate and you ask me to go get a ride out in the neighborhood, I would be like. Well, my experience is that locals don't tip like the people at the Conrad tip. I'm gonna sit at the Conrad Hotel or the Balagio or somebody that tips well, I'm not going downtown. Not gonna go sit at some budget hotel and I'm definitely not gonna service the bulk of the neighborhoods, they don't tip. Now, though, I'm sure there's some out there, but that's a, my feeling would be is that would happen, so. The incentive, the number of rides that he, he, he estimates in here is kind of based on what the industry rides are. And I don't believe that those work in the pro forma, if it's on an hourly basis, because the driver's not incentivized necessarily to go get more rides. He's incentivized to get rides where he's gonna make the biggest tip or where it's the easiest, let me go sit at the airport. Where I see a bunch of my other buddies and play cards and do what I need to do, because I'm, 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 I'm making hourly, it doesn't matter how many rides I actually take. So I, I think it makes it hard for him to get employees. And those employees, I don't think are as productive, which brings his revenue number down, I mean, it just cascades into worse and worse and worse, in my opinion.
Did you have a total figure or estimate that you leave, uh? Or mistakes in, uh, the second pro forma? Uh, on a monthly basis?
My estimation is, is with the fourteen thousand dollars in excise cap, the twelve thousand dollars in airport, three thousand extra in workers' comp. The extra almost twenty thousand that he would need to do, I believe, to pay prevailing wages similar to what the rest of the industry does. And another thirteen thousand for the tip compliance payroll taxes. This is not taking into account the mechanics and a lot of tendings, which I think are off, is not taking into account the dispatch, which I believe is off, or the rent, which is off. And again, this is only what I was able to look at in the amount of time from yesterday till today. I believe that there's sixty thousand dollars a month missing in. Either a reduction in revenue, whether you wanna call it an expense or not. Either a reduction in revenue, whether you wanna call it an expense or not.
And the, the pro forma estimates a net income of thirteen thousand dollars?
Correct, I, I believe it's fifty thousand dollars a month upside down.
For the record clarification, this is with the employee model?
Correct.
Thank you. Um. So the, this, second employee model pro forma is not compensable either?
I believe the employee model is worse than the lease model.
Meaning, it's gonna lose more money.
It's, it's less compensable, yeah.
Now, did you sit down, um, let me strike that back up? Did Mr. Carson come see you, um, say in like twenty nineteen or thereabouts, about the idea of a cab company?
Um. Yes, and I would preface it by saying, uh, I'm friends with Mr. Carson, uh, he was my lawyer for a long time. Golfed with him, buddies with him, so.
Yeah, spoon.
Then, we have, uh, uh, known each other for a long time, so he came and saw me a lot. To talk about the transportation business, the cab industry, what was going on in the cab industry, the limousine industry, so we've had conversations. For years about the transportation industry, uh, leading up to. The, uh, the conversation that we would have had more specific to this app.
Okay, um, but you do remember that conversation?
I do.
You remember what he said and what you said?
Uh, uh, Brent came in, wanted to let me know that he, uh. Congratulated me on getting out of the cab business, and, uh, wanted to let me know that he was gonna apply for a tax income. And, kinda told me what it was gonna be, that he was gonna apply for thirty-five taxi cabs, um, and. I told him he was crazy, I, I. Doesn't make any sense, he goes, well, that's what I wanna do, I'm going, I've been doing this for a long time, buddy, and I'm telling you, that doesn't work. It's, it's a dead loser, you cannot make any money starting a new cab company with thirty-five taxi cabs, thirty-five medallions. It just does not work, and I started to go through all the different things, I said. A cab company with one cab, or two cabs, where you could drive one, Claudia could drive one, and you could run it out of your house. You know, maybe you could skirt some of the rules, wouldn't have paid workers' comp, because you're the owner, and you can sign yourself out of it, you know, that, possibly. Or, you're gonna have to be hundreds of medallions, so that you can spread. The cost of all the regulations across all of these medallions, it just does not work at thirty-five. And I started going through each and every one of the expenses, I said, minimum wage is going up. The, the payroll taxes on it, the regulation costs, the medallion fee, dispatch, and I. Don't remember exactly all of them, but I was just rattling them off, and as I'm rattling them off, he was sitting there, and it wasn't even facing him, and. As I'm telling him that, it dawned on me, I'm like, oh, you're not gonna have any employees. You're gonna just lease the cabs, you're gonna up, you're gonna pass this off. To one of your guys that's running one of your limousine companies or something, and just have them operate it, where they have a facility and everything. And it's just gonna be mailbox money for you. He didn't say yes, he didn't say no, he just kinda smirked at me, and I thought, huh, well, if you do this, and I'm in the cab business. I'm, I'm gonna have to protest you, and if I'm not in the cab business, I can guarantee you the yellow cab and everybody else. And that was our conversation. Like, it is not compensable, it does not work as an employee model at thirty-five cabs, medallions, I've done this. It cannot be done unless it's being done by a transportation company that's already in the business. And, and maybe that, he has that deal, and we just don't know about it, but, uh, you, you can't go open up. A facility and do this, it just, I've done it, it does not work, it cannot be done, and it can't even be done as a lease model. Because it's just, there's, there's not enough medallions and revenue to cover what it costs. To run a cab company nowadays, there's just too many regulations and costs, and it just, it doesn't happen. Back when in the day when we were running it, cab drivers were exempt from minimum wage, there was endless other opportunities that we had. That made it worthwhile, I believe that in the lease model, again. Perhaps, if you charge enough for the lease, and you can get people to pay you that, it could become compensable. But again, I don't know why somebody will go pay him a thousand, eleven, twelve hundred dollars a week to lease one of his cabs. When he'd come leasing for me for seven fifty, you're saying, well, if it's compensable for me at seven fifty, why, why can't he do it at seven fifty? Well, I can do it at seven hundred and fifty, because I have. All my employee models in Virg, I have a whole bunch of other cabs that I can spread all this across, that are on the employee model. So I have so many more medallions, I can undercut and lease way cheaper than he can. Uh, so it, it's, he can't match my rate, now, if every one of us have no more cars to lease. Then, I guess we could work the rates up, but I, again, I just don't think that's feasible. So, that's why I don't believe either one of them are compensable, um, again, that's my opinion.
Um, I mean, I wanna get to the, uh, summary that we produced, um. And its, uh, statistics from Tax Cab Authority, I think it's attached to your.
Yeah, yes.
Um. Could you please explain, um, how this is helpful for the board with respect to the statistics for TA in the business? Um, and the allocations that we're working through?
Sure, so, I, I, in the exhibit, I, I basically, uh, cooked the industry and looked at it from. Two thousand three, four to two thousand fourteen, which is the, the kind of the pre-Uber, and. I chose that because those statistics were available to TA website, but during that ten years, from two thousand and four to two thousand and fourteen. On average, the Tax Cab Authority, well, I should preface by saying, I, 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 I don't know. Any of you were served on the, no, historically, not all medallions were equi. Uh, so we had full-time equivalent, so a, a, a full-time medallion meant you could use it any day you wanted it, twenty-four hours a day. In any neighborhood, any place, but then there were weekend medallions, there were medallions that were only allowed to go out from. Noon to noon, twelve to twelves, we called them, and actually it was noon to two in the morning, you had to pick twelve hours in there. There were cars that went out on Thursday afternoon at two, but they had to come off, I think, Monday at two in the afternoon. Uh, there were cars that could only serve South Sunset geographically, so it was all kinds of different medallions, but we, we measured them on equivalent. So, uh, two twelve to twelve medallions would be considered one, full-time equivalent. During the ten years from two thousand and four to two thousand and fourteen, on average, we were allocating about. Fifty medallions a year into the industry. Didn't happen fifty a year, but it kinda happened in steps, but that's what happened, about fifty a year. When Uber came along. And everything changed, and we decided we needed to compete, we needed to have the flexibility, we went in before the board to say. You're gonna have to remove these geographical restrictions, you, you need to take all these restrictions off for us, that's the only way we're gonna be able to compete, and. Because most of the restrictions are not gonna increase the number of cabs that are on the weekends, because we had those weekend cars. We also want more allocation, so we'd have more weekend cars. So, the allocation that happened during that fall, basically late summer of fifteen into the spring of two thousand and sixteen. That allocation was about sixteen hundred full-time equivalent. So, thirty years, on average, worth of medallions were allocated in less than a year, given to us all. Of course, during those hearings, the cab drivers were upsetting, this is crazy, you can't get seventy medallions out, and we were like, we're not gonna put them out. These are, so we don't have to come in and ask for more medallions all the time, we're not gonna run them every day, there's no need for them on Tuesday mornings, Tuesday nights. But anyway, there was basically sixteen, thirty years worth of medallions allocated in less than a year. So, in this chart, I kind of show that, in the heyday. We were doing fifty trips per medallion per day. To fast forward to now, to twenty twenty-one, we're doing nine trips per medallion per day. Because of that gigantic allocation of cars. The, the fact to say that somehow or rather putting thirty-five more medallions on the road. But, we have the medallions, it, it, creating a new cab company doesn't do anything, it's, it's just thirty-five more medallions. I, I guess he can argue he's gonna operate somehow differently, I haven't heard what that difference is, and looking at the pro formas, I don't. I don't know why drivers would go there versus our company, he's paying them less, so I, I, I don't, I don't see how that works. We have the medallions, we currently have them, I believe that we're serving the public, and we're putting them out there as they're needed. Um, as more drivers come back to the industry, it's increasing, but the reality is, is that. They're not all going out on weekdays, and they don't need to go out on weekdays, um, so, that, that chart, I, I just thought it was important to show. What a large allocation happened, and that happened to compete against Uber. Throw in, after we did that, Prius folds up, COVID hits. So, again, I, I believe that the, the addition of another cab company is just, it makes zero sense to me. Because we already have the medallions, we're willing to meet the need, I believe, at least I can speak for my company, I am meeting the need, need every day. All the time, and I'm spending the money with dispatchers and all the things I'm doing in order to do that.
Um, in meeting the needs, the demands of the traveling public, it, it's. Is it unwise to put out all your medallions every day? What effect would that have?
The, the only way you could put them out every day would be, number one, if you could hire the drivers. And, and force them to drive when they didn't want to drive, which I would believe would drive them away, that was the whole reason. We asked for these extra medallions, because historically, we knew that when we had twelve to twelve medallions. Those were much easier to fill with drivers, because they knew those were some busier times, they didn't wanna work at three in the morning, they wanted to work when it was the busiest, and, and that makes sense. So let's have a smaller number of cars out in the early mornings, and we'll have more cars out. And the times that we need them, so having a large number of medallions allows you to run what we call super shifts, rather than the traditional. Day shift, night shift, um, so, again, but you need to have a lot of medallions in order to do that. Because, again, someone could walk in and go, oh my God, there's a hundred medallions sitting on the counter, yeah, it's. Tuesday morning, there, there's just no need for them, if we did put them all out. We would just be guaranteeing minimum wage to the drivers, and at, at some point, the guarantee of minimum wage is not what they're working for, that's. They can go make more than the guarantee of minimum wage flipping burgers at Burger King, so. We don't put them all out, because we won't have any employees if we didn't.
Yeah, they don't book, it's just not enough work.
Correct.
Um, are you, Desert Cam, willing to meet the needs of the traveling public?
Yes, I.
Does this application in any way need to be granted to meet the needs?
I do not believe so.
I have nothing else, thank you.
I am not, um. Inviting friendly cross that I will give. Mr. Crafton, do you have any questions?
No.
Mr. Gibson?
No.
Wise decisions.
Yeah.
I just, uh, I know some of my colleagues don't think much of friendly cross. Um, person you may examine.
Do you mind if I go to have a bathroom break first?
Um, sure, we'll take five and come back at, uh, twenty-five o'clock.